Welcome to the May 29, 2018 meeting of the Marquette City Commission. I would like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in whose law liberty and justice are our own.
City Clerk, could we please have the roll call?
Thank you Mayor. Commissioner Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Plourd.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Present.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Mayor Protem Stonehouse.
Here.
Mayor Campana.
Here.
Commissioners, you have the agenda in front of you. We have a motion to approve. Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? That passes seven zero. Announcements? I apologize for starting ten minutes late. We had a work session tonight that went longer than we expected. It got out about five two, so thank you for staying with us. Other than that, I have no other announcements. We're going to move to boards and committees. Tonight, we're going to welcome two new members to an authority committee for the city. If I could see Rob Baranek and Steven Slavinsky at this podium to my right, please. Okay, Rob Baranek. Rob? Rob is going to volunteer to be on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And Steven Slavinsky? Steven is going to be on the Harbor Advisory Committee. We thank both you gentlemen for coming forward and volunteering to be on this. Takes time, we understand that, but your expertise and your knowledge will help these committees and these committees do, will help to make Marquette a better place. We appreciate you stepping up and doing this. We wish more people would do what you're doing and we really do appreciate it. We would like to give you each the Marquette pin, the official Marquette pin. It's just when you wear it, it signifies you as being someone who is volunteering for the city. So, Rob?
Yours.
And Steven?
Yours.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, do you have anything you care to say? No, usually not, okay?
Just looking forward to it.
Thank you, thank you. We do appreciate you doing that. Who has to take an oath?
I do.
Steven does? Okay, we'll do that right here. Rob, we're all set. Let's hear it for these gentlemen for doing this. Thank you.
I, Steven Slavinsky, do solemn, we swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter of the City of Marquette, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the Harbor Advisory Committee of the City of Marquette according to the best of my ability.
Next, we have the recognition of an outgoing member of a committee. That would be Mr. Dan Torres. Dan, if you could come up here, please. You're on the hot spot.
Have you seen?
Huh? Oh, yes, you did. Mr. Torres has been on the Brownfield, Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority at least five or six years that I'm aware of. We served together on this. And Dan has done an outstanding job on the Brownfield. They've been responsible for a lot of improvement, construction within the Marquette area. All you gotta do is drive around and look around. So, we appreciate your time that you spent doing this with all people like you. We couldn't have the great city that we do have. In saying goodbye to you, and I hope you come back again in the future, we got this certificate of appreciation. It says, hang on, "To Dan Torres, for volunteer effort on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, thank you for your hard work and dedication in serving the citizens of this community." And we do really appreciate it. I give you this. And also, even better, it's a dress-up t-shirt. Yeah, this is a nice one. Okay, it's Marquette t-shirt. It's got our logo, some highlights of the city, and we're going to give you this so you can wear it daily. Yeah, every now and then you wash it, yeah. Let's hear it for Dan. Thank you for serving on the committee.
Okay.
Next, we move to a reappointment. We have one reappointment tonight. That is Walt Lindela to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for a term ending six-one of twenty-one. Would someone care to make a motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that we reappoint Walt Lindela to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for a term ending June first, 2021.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Plourd?
I second.
Comments, any, none?
Just, Your Honor, just to say that Walt started with the Arts and Culture Committee several years ago, and I remember having discussions with him. I know Walt very well, and he's done a great job with that committee, helping to organize it and get it on the right track. So, he's so valuable with the, with that committee. I'm glad, I'm glad he's going to re-up.
Thank you. Walt is a leader on that committee. He's, he'll be a good person for that committee. See no further comment? All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? That carries seven zero. Next, we come to our first public comment of the evening. Public comment is when citizens, residents can speak to the commission. They can reserve time to speak on a future agenda item, or they can just speak to us at this time. We would like you to speak at the front podium. We need your name, address, and you have three minutes. We're going to open up public comment. Anybody wish to address the commission at this time?
Hi, I'm Jen Hill, 503 Craig Street, and I want to speak strongly in favor of the Dark Sky Park. I think it's an absolute benefit to the community and both for residents and for, as was stated earlier, the tourism opportunities that it would bring. I've been to Flagstaff, Arizona, twice, which has, not only, they're a dark sky city where all the streetlights and everything are pointed down, and to be able to walk around and see the stars anywhere you are. And I live in South Marquette, and I can almost see the Milky Way on really dark nights, and I really treasure that opportunity. That's one of the reasons I live in the U.P., is that dark sky. And I think that, as was said earlier, I agree, that you will actually have more people out on the park paying attention, taking care of things, and watching over each other, and it would not be, it would be a positive benefit to that place and for all of the residents and all of our many visitors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Greetings. I'm Wendy Frye, 413 West Bluff. I'm actually on vacation, so I'm reading off my phone because I don't have a printer. I am a Marquette native, former Marquette resident, and now owner of a vacation home within the city of Marquette. The reason I have a second home and travel eight hours every other weekend is specifically to ride my bike on the trail system. And every time I am at the South Trails, I meet scores of people from out of town there to ride. I see families, I see walkers, I see dog owners, I see geocachers. I don't do that personally, but I go with my mother. You can imagine my dismay when I saw the city's request for development of four of the parcels containing the South Trails, including the land directly adjacent to the trailhead. This parcel is essentially the gateway to the trail system and is heavily utilized for recreation by numerous user groups. It is also adjacent to a snowmobile trail, a scenic drive, and a campground. The financial benefit of the trail system to the city has already been stated many times, but basically it is why people live here and is why they visit here. At a minimum, this land development needs to go through a public planning process. The master plan adopted in 2015 specifically states, "Much of the NTN's South Trail Network is on land that was part of the Hartwood Forest Land Property Acquisition, and the disposition of this municipally-owned property in South Marquette should be formally established by the adoption of a sub-area plan for use and management of the property in order to guide future investments in the trail system." Another segment of the master plan reads, "Until a public planning process is conducted for property acquired through the purchase of Hartwood Forest Land Holdings, the land is to be kept in a conservation status. I request the city commission to establish a formal public planning process for the parcels now under RFQ. In my opinion, as a taxpayer, a non-homesteaded taxpayer, these parcels are already developed to serve the city in the best possible way and should remain as recreation land." Thank you. That was longer than I thought.
Thank you.
My name is Gail Hannah. I live at 2838 Granite Point Drive in the city of Marquette. I'm here to speak in support of what Wendy just said. My husband and I are both from downstate Michigan. We moved to Marquette and just absolutely fell in love with the trail system. We have had numerous, I won't even call them opportunities, almost threats that we had to go back downstate, and the thought made us sick. And the thought of losing the parcels there around the trailhead, which really are one of the jewels of Marquette, also makes me sick. So, I would agree with, with what Wendy said, and that I hope we can have a public process and keep those as they are, because I think they're perfect as they are. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Curran at 200 South Fourth Street here in Marquette. I also own the Rippling River Resort. I just learned about the proposal for parcel thirty-five out of the South Trails being up for sale. I think it'd be a tragedy for the city to allow that to be developed. You know, you guys, hopefully many of you have ridden, walked those trails. I mean, a lot of them are already on our property. We want to continue to keep that growth going. It's, it's just such a jewel in there. If you haven't walked it, walk it, and you'll understand why it shouldn't be developed. I mean, I don't know many of you. I haven't seen many of you out on the trails, but go check it out. Also, you know, I know the city's in kind of financial straits and needs to raise money and needs to raise tax revenue, so maybe there's an opportunity for us to work together, come up with a creative solution where the city gets a little bit of money, and perhaps the property doesn't get developed or gets incorporated differently to where we ensure that those trails stay. So, I'm reaching out there. If you guys are interested in, in working together on it in some fashion to prevent it from becoming some big multifamily thing, which I know a lot about, and keeping that as vacant land or some type of limited development out there. I'm here. If you guys have any ideas, let's bring it forth and work together to keep those trails. Thank you.
Frank Schifero, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. Our spring yard debris pickup came way too late, and people are incensed over being turned away at the dump site due to the low capacities and reduced hours. The red lights on Front Street between Spring and Washington fell out of sync two months ago after being just fine for twenty-five years, and more of Shira's Park is eroded away while nothing is done. May fourteenth, two proclamations were read. Despite my mention of a third one for Arbor Day, this board kept it hidden into the consent agenda unread. The environment that we live here for is their lowest priority. Even sicker is this chair's signature on the document, knowing he cares less about the elements within, or public input for that matter. He'll be remembered for voting against closing public comment. He was also fine with telling the chief to start timing me while he wrote unrelated matter. All discourse here is to pass through the chair, who's obviously not up to the task. His insulting discourtesy epitomized the sleaziest form of arrogance. Mr. Plourd and Schlegel won't receive the positivity they asked for when the chair acts this way. Mr. Schlegel advised I say something good about the community, unaware that I've said more positive about Marquette in here than most anyone else, and continually show my divine love for nature and for our people. Members deflect my criticism toward them as directed at the city, contradicting my twenty years on record. Some members think they are the city. We all are the city. Six minutes doesn't allow enough time for much positivity under the prevailing circumstances, not with Mr. Campana, Stonehouse, and Plourd on board. Members who don't like burying the sins of past boards are asked to answer for this current board without finagling. They chose to assume perpetual seats on this dynamic board, thus if past errors surfaced during their regimes, they'll hear about it, even have it rubbed in their noses, especially when the board was warned ahead of time. Those who dislike that notion are urged to volunteer elsewhere until we establish a viable public process by which twelve years of public input isn't thrown out the window to fulfill the dream of one man. This board answered our concerns of May fourteenth by selling him the rest, knowing he'd blocked the rest of our view with three-story buildings. Mr. Plourd claims people dislike my use of flounders. That's not my word. Residents coined that term, maybe the same folks who coined the Godzilla condos. If the name fits, I go with it. Is there nothing more important happening around town and in our lives than to care how Frank pronounces a word? Our founders would be ashamed of what's transpired there. Years of floundering, lost opportunities, and the utter disregard of twelve years of innovative planning and public input to end up with that? The results on the public record are there for all to see. The public is asked, "Who more likely tells the truth? The man who wants the record reviewed, or our board members, none of whom has ever sought this review?"
Anyone else? Does anyone else wish to address the commission at this time? Seeing none, we're going to close this portion of public comment. We're going to move to presentations. Tonight, we have two presentations. The first is the U.P. Children's Museum Guardian of the Quarter. We have Sammy Hewitt and Leanne DeForge. If we could see both of you up at this podium to my right. Parents, you can stay there, or you can come up here, your choice. Or you can take pictures, so. Okay, first we have, we have Sammy Hewitt. Sammy? Congratulations. Sammy is here with her sister, Ally. Her parents are Curtis and Elaine Hewitt. Sammy is in the fifth grade at Cherry Creek. Is that correct? Okay. And then we have Leanne. Leanne, congratulations. Leanne's parents are Tina and Jerry DeForge. Leanne is in the fifth grade in the Gani Schools. Is that correct? Well, good for you. I am told that you are both good students and you're both good citizens, and that you both do a very good job at the children's museum. So, I could say more, but Jim Edwards, who can always say more than me for sure, will continue the conversation. Now, we want them here to talk. Yes, it's up to you to get them to talk.
I know Leanne has something to say.
If any of you guys have children, I believe you should all take them to the children's museum. It stands for Freedom, Equality, Creativity, and Imagination.
Amen.
Did I say hi? No. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. See, we have someone relatively new to the museum and someone I've known since she was kind of born and crawled in, walked in, jumped in. I'll always remember Sammy, one time in the fall. She's our caregiver. She's our animal lover. She's a, she'll look after anyone and everybody at the museum, but I remember her in that tutu with the roller skates delivering ice cream. She's dynamic. And then Leanne, Leanne's our thinker, and she began life at the museum on Thursday nights as our fortune teller. And now she predicts the sort of, sort of programming I should be doing. And then I thought to myself tonight, we've been celebrating twenty years at the museum, just gone twenty-one years now, neither of them was born then. It's just a different way of thinking, that now we have other youngsters who've been guardians of the quarter are here this, this evening, and Daniel. We missed Daniel on Brickley just then. Other brothers and sisters, Mr. Mayor. And there's this growing family, and now a second generation of that family leading the museum. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And again, we're honored to have both of you here. You've done a good job. The City of Marquette appreciates it, what you do here, and we would like to present you with a Youth Leadership Award. It says, presented, Youth Leadership Award presented to Sammy and to Leanne from the U.P. Children's Museum for being the outstanding guardian of the quarter. Sammy, I'm going to give you this one. You can treasure it. Leanne, this is yours. Enjoy it. I have one more thing. The, our Chair of the Baking Committee is Commissioner Sarah Reynolds. Again, she was up at five o'clock this morning. She made a little treat for you, because you guys are good for the, good and sweet for the children's museum, and she wants you to have this. So, brush your teeth after you're done eating it. Thank you very much. Glad you do what you do. Yeah, thank you very much. Don't give it back. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we come to our second presentation of the evening, which is the Dark Sky Park by the Assistant Parks and Rec Director, Andrew McIver.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm Andrew McIver, Assistant Director of Community Services. What I have for you today is a presentation talking about the Dark Sky Park proposal. This is something that is very community-focused, brought forward by the Marquette Astronomical Society. Marquette City staff have been working tirelessly to kind of develop an operational compromise to make this work and to see if this is going to be a good fit for the community. So, there's some programming in place, working with Peter White Public Library. We've got some telescopes that are available. Also, too, with the Marquette Astronomical Society, they've got an excellent club, too, with great educational resources. Starting off, a little bit of a background. This came to us last year by Larry Biggie with the Marquette Astronomical Society advocating for dark sky with an area in the city of Marquette, primarily at Prescott Park. This proposal went to Prescott Park Advisory Committee, which was approved on August ninth, 2019, which was moved on from Parks and Research Advisory Board, which was approved July seventeen, 2017, ultimately to the city commission and approved on September eleventh, 2017. What followed forth was the 2017 trial period. This trial period was September eleventh through October thirty-first, 2017. It was Friday and Saturday nights only, and it was basically an extension of the hours from eleven PM to one AM. The streetlights were turned off by the Marquette Astronomical Society with a switch that was donated by the Board of Light and Power, and the pavilion softened lights were, remained on, but were not considered an issue. Gates to the drive around the island were to be locked at eleven PM. That is the gate that is by the gazebo, and then the other gate that is at the other side of the park by Prescott Pavilion. That in sense is making kind of a barrier where if you can't drive there, that area is closed to the public. The main gate is still locked at eleven PM on the other weekends, or other days, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. This was well-received by the community. However, there were some issues brought forth by staff. There was also some issues within the trial period itself. Number one, it was very limited. Of course, the half of the nights were only appropriate for dark sky from either weather events, maybe it just wasn't the best of viewing in those certain nights, maybe due to a full moon, but also the summer was not included. So, we, we just did not have a very long trial period. Also, the main gate was open the entire night, so that would leave the park open to the general public. If, even though there were signs that could be disregarded, and there was some misuse of the park, there were a couple of issues noted by Public Works that were corrected and some further things that we're looking to correct with this next trial period and the proposal. With these issues that happened, we could not say that this was a direct consequence of the Dark Sky Park, more so just the park being open and especially after park close. So, with this proposal for 2018, what we're looking at is a longer trial, starting June first through October thirty-first. This will allow for more weather-appropriate nights, kind of going through the, the summer months, as the nights are going to be kind of short to begin in June, as we have the summer solstice coming up, but we'll then start getting some longer nights as we, as the sun will go down sooner. So, Park Patrol will assist us with this, with special thanks to the Police Department, Blake Rebolt, helping out and kind of working with this compromise. He will be assisting with getting the gate closed at one AM to ensure that this misuse of the park will not continue. This will not be at any additional cost to the city, and this will also allow for additional patrol presence. So, with this, there is no other changes happening from this previous trial with this trial. Really, the only thing that was a misconception was the lighting at, the street lighting and all the lighting. We could not find a way to really effectively and securely shut off all the lights at the Prescott Pavilion. However, there is measures in place to shut off streetlights. It was just a little bit of a miscommunication that was cleared, cleared up. So, with this trial, again, we want to encompass more nights. We want to determine if there's any issues that might surface, document those, to see what the best viewing experiences might be, and to see if this truly is a good fit for the city, and then also see if there's any issues by shifting Park Patrol, seeing if there's any difference in the increased patrolling. So, in this map, kind of shows a little bit more detail exactly what's going to happen with this park. So, Fridays and Saturday nights only, the gate that goes, or the two gates that will go around the island will be closed at, at park close at eleven PM, and that means closed, as in no trespassing in that area. So, what that leaves open is the area by the pavilion for the viewing area. That area will be open until one AM. At that point, that's when the police will come and close the gate. This is a great picture at Prescott Park. Larry Biggie provided all these pictures for us. Just kind of shows what exactly is out here. You can see the Milky Way, some of the northern lights, just the, the beautiful sky that we have here in the Upper Peninsula. And here's another picture, too, and at this point, I would like to open it for any questions.
Thank you, Andrew. Commissioners, any questions? How many people show up for these things?
That, sir, I'm not sure.
You know, five, ten? Just interesting.
Um, so, one of my first nights when I first moved up here in February of 2014, there was a northern lights event. I do recall that, and of course, February, it gets dark at seven-thirty, eight o'clock. I remember going out to the island just before park closed. There was probably close to hundred people out at the island, just, yeah, just out at the pavilion, just to watch the northern lights.
They show up, they bring telescopes?
Yes.
They set them up right there, or they lug them down?
Um, a lot of them can set them up in kind of that green, grassy area, just, just, just beside the parking lot there. For the most part, everyone just kind of goes and observes. It's usually pretty quiet, sitting on the benches, picnic tables.
Okay.
Just one, one observation, I guess. I think this is really a great opportunity for people to get out and experience that. I've been able to, to do it, not necessarily out there, but in other areas of the U.P., and it's just mind-blowing when you get a, get to experience without any extra garbage light, I would call it, when you're trying to get some good stargazing. And I would encourage the people that are, that are big into the event to do as much policing as possible, you know, just to, whether it's trash or making sure that people are being respectful, whatever it is. Self-policing is one of the best things that can happen and make an event that's great even greater. So, we just encourage that, but this is really cool. Thank you.
Mr. Stonehouse?
Thank you for what you're doing and trying to make this work. I think it's a tremendous project. I think it's a great opportunity for the public. And for those that really have not seen a dark sky, you gotta see a dark sky, because it is truly... And for those that really have not seen a dark sky, you gotta see a dark sky, because it is truly... How do I say this? It opens the heavens. It brings you maybe a little closer to whoever your god may be, because you're right there. And I've seen them so many times at light, and at light, rather, on the lake at night, where that's all you have, is that huge dark sky ahead of you. It is absolutely fantastic. And I think the opportunity for the city of Marquette, working together with the astronaut, astr- with the, the Stargazing Society, uh, is a wonderful chance for all of us to kind of renew that, and to see it on, on certainly much easier terms. So, thank you.
Well, Andrew, thank you very much for coming, presenting. I, I personally hope that this, um, continues without any problems. I see the good thing being you got, you're taking hopefully kids at, you know, a young age, all the way up through teenager, and... This is educational. They're learning something. They'll go on further, so... You, you can't knock something that's educational. That's a good thing. So I hope it continues. Okay, thank you very much. We'll be voting on this later. Next, we have three public hearings tonight. The first public hearing is a single lots special assessment roll, number five eighty-five. If the city clerk could give us a background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Background, Chapter forty, Section forty dash twenty-one of the City Code, requires that when an improvement shall have been made upon, by the city upon or in respect to any single premises, the expense of which is chargeable against such premises, and the owner thereof, under the provisions of this chapter, and is not of that class required to be prorated among several lots and parcels of land in a special assessment district. An account of the cost to be charged to the owner shall be reported to the city treasurer, who shall immediately bill the owner if known. The City Code further states that when the city treasurer determines that a number of properties have had outstanding bills for a sufficient time, the treasurer shall notify the city assessor, who shall prepare a single lots assessment roll, and schedule a public hearing before the City Commission on that roll. Impacted property owners on the attached list have received notification of the time and place of the hearing, in accordance with Section forty dash twenty-one of the City Code. The City Commission tonight, scheduled tonight's public hearing at their regular meeting held May fourteenth. Fiscal effect, one thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-two cents, plus accruing interest and penalties. Recommendation, following the public hearing, confirm single lots special assessment rule five eighty-five, and authorize the mayor to sign the warrant. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing. If someone wishes, wishes to address us on this particular item, now is the opportunity. At the front podium, you have three minutes. We would need name and local address. At this point, does anybody wish to address us on this item? Anyone? Seeing none, we're gonna close public hearing on this item. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Plard?
Your honor, I move that we confirm single lots special assessment roll number five eighty-five, and authorize the mayor to sign the warrant.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Plard, anything? Commissioner Reynolds? Commissioners? What this is, is, uh, when the city has to step in and do things like mow somebody's lawn, or they're not, they haven't paid for fire inspection, they incur a bill, the city's just trying to get this money back. This is what we're voting on. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carries seven zero. Oops, hold it, this is a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mayor.
Let's do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plard?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Yes.
And Mayor Campana?
Yes, yes, that's... We got it twice. We come to our second public hearing of the evening. It's ordinance number six six seven, which is repealing Chapter twenty-six of the Fire Prevention and Protection, Article Three, Rental Fire Safety Code of the Marquette City Code, and adopting a new Chapter twenty-six, Article Three. City clerk, that please.
Thank you, Mayor. Background, in May and August two thousand seventeen, the City Commission adopted ordinances to provide for short-term rentals in the city of Marquette. Recently, the city manager initiated the previously scheduled one-year review of the ordinances. The Fire Department has reviewed this ordinance for any needed changes, and reformatted the ordinance in a more streamlined and concise format. The City Commission scheduled tonight's public hearing at the regular meeting held May fourteenth. Fiscal effect none. Recommendation, following the public hearing, adopt ordinance number six six seven, which repeals Chapter twenty-six, Article Three of the Marquette City Code in its entirety, and adopt a new Chapter twenty-six, Article Three. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. We're gonna open this public hearing. If anyone wishes to address us, now is the time. At the front podium, we need name, address, and you have three minutes. Does anybody wish to address the commission? On this item? Anyone? Seeing none, we're gonna close this public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Smith?
I move that we adopt ordinance number six six seven, which repeals Chapter twenty-six, Article Three of the Marquette City Code in its entirety, and adopt a new Chapter twenty-six, Article Three.
Is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel? Have any comments? None, none?
Yeah, I do. Um, you have a pick? I'm sorry. These guys work their butts off to put this together and to make all these changes. Um, I just wanna say thank you, uh, chief, and to, uh, just say that when I was in the planning commission, that it was, uh...
Joy to work with you guys through that process, and, uh, thanks for all the hard work.
Any other commissioners? Anything else? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. City clerk, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plard?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Yes.
And Mayor Campana?
Yes, that carries seven zero. We come to our third and final public hearing of the evening. That is ordinance number six six eight, the Zoning Ordinance Amendments. City clerk, we have that background, please.
Thank you, sir. Background, the City Commission adopted zoning ordinance amended, amendments related to short-term rental properties in May of two thousand seventeen, and at that time stated that those ordinance amendments should be reviewed and any recommended changes be brought forward in one year. The Planning Commission conducted a review of the zoning ordinance provisions related to short-term rental properties during the early months of two thousand eighteen, and held work sessions on the is- on the issue at three of their regular meetings, in addition to two joint work sessions with the City Commission during that period. On May one, two thousand eighteen, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider their proposed amendment to several subsections of the zoning ordinance, and portions of the downtown Marquette Waterform, waterfront form-based code, and the south Marquette waterfront form-based code. After conducting the public hearing, the following motion was made. It was moved by T. Clip, seconded by A. Ruiz, and carried eight to zero, that after review of the proposed zoning ordinance amendments stated in oh one, zero eight, oh five, eighteen, and after conducting a public hearing, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed text amendments are supported by the community master plan, and therefore recommends to the City Commission that the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, the downtown Marquette waterfront form-based code, and the south Marquette waterfront form-based code be approved. The City Commission scheduled tonight's public hearing at the regular meeting held May fourteenth. Fiscal effect none. Recommendation, following the public hearing, adopt ordinance number six sixty-eight, zoning ordinance amendments. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. We're gonna open this public hearing. If anyone wishes to address the commission, you have three minutes at the front podium. We would nee- need name and address. Does anybody at this time wish to address the commission?
Hi, Mark Curran from two hundred South Fourth Street again. Um, I didn't really look through this ordinance too well, but just the one thing that really popped out to me, you guys reduced the parking requirements from two parking spaces per unit to one point one, or, yeah, one point one two five. Just from my experience with rental units, you might have two people coming to these units, two cars, you know? Mom works late, has to come late, or vice versa with dad. I would just strongly recommend that one change of leaving it at two vehicles. You know, if these are gonna be extra, short-term rental units, you should ask the people to provide parking. I mean, our winter parking is tough enough. You know, I have to supply a heck of a lot more than what's required here when I'm building apartments. So I just wanna strongly encourage you to just have a quick discussion on parking.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to address us? Seeing none, we're gonna close this public hearing. Commissioners, we would need a motion. Would anyone care to make a motion? Commissioner, uh, Smith?
I move that we adopt ordinance number six six eight, zoning ordinance amendments.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Any comments? Commissioners, anybody anywhere? Do we dare ans- answer that question about the parking? I know we, it's been discussed with the Planning Commission. We've discussed it. Can you give us a quick answer on that, as to why you've got one point? Isn't it point two five?
Yeah, good evening. The proposal to reduce the parking standard applies only to the Central Business District and the, uh, Community Business District, which is, um, the district that runs from Ridge to Fair along Third Street. The, uh, and that was, um, the DDA's own, um, request, uh, in that district. Also came from some resident, uh, property owners in the district. Um, but the, that was vetted by the D- Planning Commission through the DDA. And, uh, so the Planning Commission did vote to make that change. The exception to all this, the, for resi- the residential zoning districts, the two spaces per dwelling unit still applies. And as of now, that's where the vast majority of short-term rentals are, in the single-family do- well, uh, zoning districts. The one exception you'll see here, under the eighty forty-two parking standards, is with one-bedroom, um, short-term rentals. The Planning Commission did, uh, recommend that the parking standard be reduced to one space per dwelling unit for those one-bedroom, um, STRs.
Thank you, thank you. That helps. Okay, this would require a roll call vote. City clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plard?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes, carries seven zero. Next, we come to the consent agenda. We would need a motion to pass this. Who would like to make a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
A motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Is there a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Seeing no discussion? It's a resolution? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plard?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes, that carries seven zero. Next, we move to unfinished business. Two items on unfinished business tonight. The first is Vangos Incorporated, the concession lease agreement. City clerk, could you please give us some background?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, Vangos Inc. requests the City Commission consider renewing their lease to provide concession services at Elwood Matson Park and Prescott Isle Park. Staff has worked with city attorney in Vangos to draft a standard lease agreement, which provides for the terms and conditions of their proposal. The agreement has three years, with three op- operational periods of four months annually, May fifteenth through September fifteen. The monthly payment during operations shall be six hundred dollars, including utilities per site. The proposed lease agreement was introduced at the Commission's May fourteenth, two thousand eighteen meeting, and approved as recommended to move the lease agreement forward to the May twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen meeting. Fiscal effect, the general fund will receive four thousand eight hundred dollars in revenue for fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen. Recommendation, approve the lease agreement with Vangos Inc. for concession space at Elwood Matson Park and Prescott Isle Park, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Plard?
Your honor, I move that we approve the lease agreement with Vangos Incorporated for concession space at Elwood Matson Park and Prescott Isle Park, and authorize you and the clerk to sign it.
Thank you, is there a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Commissioner Plard?
Just to say, your honor, that, uh, Vangos has done a great job down there, and, uh, my family takes advantage of the ice cream, uh, facilities as much as they can, so... We appreciate what they do.
Thank you. Mr. Frazier?
Are you buying us all ice cream for good commissioners, or what? Once they open?
Sure.
Okay, seeing no further comments, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. Second unfinished business item, the Upper Peninsula Community Rowing Club, the facility lease. City clerk, some background, please.
Thank you, sir. Background, the Upper Peninsula Community Rowing Club has requested the City Commission consider renewing their lease for space in Founder's Landing Observation Deck. Staff has worked with the city attorney and representatives of the U.P., Upper Peninsula Community Rowing Club, to develop the agreement. The agreement has a term of three years, from June one, two thousand eighteen, to May thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Rent shall consist of six dollars per square foot, for a total rental amount of two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars per year. The Upper Peninsula Community Rowing Club has requested that any leasehold improvements, improvement costs be credited against the rent due. The proposed lease agreement was introduced at the Commission's May fourteenth, two thousand eighteen meeting, and approved as recommended to move the lease agreement forward to the May twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen meeting. Fiscal effect, the city will realize two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars revenue with this action, minus any fee relief. Recommendation, approve the lease agreement with Upper Peninsula Community Rowing Club for leasing space at the Observatory, Observation Deck of Founder's Landing, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that we approve the lease agreement with Upper Peninsula Community Rowing Club for lease space at the Observation Deck of Founder's Landing, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it.
We need a second. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I, uh, second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
No, we've had a good thing going, and I'm glad we can continue it.
Mr. Stonehouse?
My only comment would be, it's been a great organization for a long time, and it gives me great pleasure to sit down at Matson Park with a hot cup of coffee, and watch these people go rowing by. Makes my heart warm. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? That carries seven zero. Next, we move to new business. We have three items on new business tonight. The first item is the City Commission Rules of Procedure, number two zero zero three dash zero one. City clerk, uh, some background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Background, each year, the Commission adopts rules of procedure, which may, may be amended from time to time at the Commission's discretion. The mayor has requested that City Commission Rules of Procedure, number two thousand three dash oh one, be amended as shown in the attached proposed amendment to Section two, B, one E, and five, A, two of the rules. The attached version replaces the rules in outline format with suggested changes in yellow. Fiscal effect none. Recommendation, following discussion, approve City Commission Rules of Procedure, number two thousand three oh one as amended, along with any changes the Commission should determine. Alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Schlegel?
I would make the motion to approve the, uh, City Commission Rules of Procedure, two thousand three to two thousand one as amended.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Little discussion. Commissioner Schlegel, anything?
I'm good on this one.
Commissioner Frazier?
Good.
Commissioner Reynolds?
I'm not good. Um, question to the city attorney, um, I know that you drafted this, and the change, from what I understand, is that, uh, the public can no longer comment on consent agenda items per the change?
That is not correct.
Okay.
The public may always comment on anything that's on the agenda, or anything that's on their mind. This has to do with reserving time to speak on a particular item, and their... This has to do with reserving time to speak on a particular item, and there are times when the Commission allows, and it's in their rules, the public to reserve time to speak on agenda items. And I think the mayor wanted to just tighten that down and make it understood as to what items you can reserve time on.
So...
That would be unfinished business and new business agenda items. But you can, there's nothing to prevent the public, a member of the public, from public comment on anything at any time, I mean, during the public comment periods.
But this does change it, that you cannot reserve time on consent agenda items?
It was never, ever really addressed. It just said agenda items. And the mayor felt it was necessary to be more specific, because there have been comments on the consent agenda items. But as I said, you can still do that. You just do that during the public comment portion.
Just regular public comment, yes. So, with that, I will be voting no, reason being is I do believe that if the public wants to talk for another three minutes on the consent agenda, they should be allowed. I realize that you could talk on unfinished business, new business, reserve time. But I'd prefer that they be able to do it at any time they please. Part of this job is transparency, and I feel like we live in a government right now where we don't allow that a lot of times, and people are questioning their governments. So, I think that at all points, that we should just let them do it when they want to.
Commissioner Smith?
So, Mr. Mayor, you and I had a lengthy discussion about this earlier today, and I did see your side of it. But after thinking about it quite a bit, I would also have to say I'm going to vote no on it. Anything, to me, that reduces the amount of transparency or ability for the public to talk with us isn't worth shutting it down for an extra three minutes, or an extra six minutes, as it may be in a meeting. That's how I feel about it, and I think there's a lot of people out there who would appreciate that. So, that's where I stand.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I'm voting for it. You know, this is a little lesson maybe in government archaic actions, I guess, or how things are put together. But we operate with a agenda, and the agenda is simply an organizational way of laying out on a piece of paper those actions and activities we will do during a given meeting. And you all have copies of the agenda. The first thing you see online, when you go to the website and look for Commission agendas, is the agenda cover sheet. And it covers things as simplistic as approving the agenda announcements, appointing boards and committees. You've seen it all through this meeting as it goes through. And one of the items that's important on there is the consent agenda. And the consent agenda simply is a way of taking material that's considered to be too unimportant for a full discussion, minor stuff that's repetitive, things you're going to do anyway, putting them together in one action. For example, we're going to pay our bills. We're going to approve our meeting minutes. Tonight, we bought a riding lawnmower. I mean, this is really the minutia of government that is largely, generally, almost always unimportant, at least in terms of having to call it up for a full discussion, for a full presentation. And I'm not trying to demean anything we do, but I'm trying to say there's important things that we do that the public has great action on, has great interest in, and there's other things we do that certainly fall into a much lesser category. The agenda is put together by our city charter, by the city manager. He does that in consultation with the mayor, and he will bring in, we will bring in, we will have two city commissioners participating in the building of the agenda on a rotational basis. So, there's a lot of people looking at it, a lot of people there making the decisions as to what's important and what's not important. If any city commissioner looks at this agenda and says, "Boy, I think on the consent agenda that Item 9C, Resolutions for Unpaid Stormwater and Unpaid Water/Wastewater, is important, I want it off the agenda." Happens that quick. It goes right back, it goes off the consent agenda, and it goes to the regular unfinished business or new business side of the agenda. So, you have instant ability to do that. If a member of the audience looks at this agenda and says, "I think, I don't know, Item 9A, purchase a riding lawnmower, is important." And he asks any one of seven commissioners sitting here, "Could you pull this out, because I want to comment on it?" The chances are real good they'll pull it out and allow him to comment on it. It's not an action or not an effort to keep anybody from commenting about anything. It's simply an action to make things a little more organized and a little more tight than they are. And I would caution people, too, that this agenda is merely page one of maybe 150 or 200 pages. That all of the background material is part of the agenda packet that's available online immediately after the agenda-setting session on Friday morning, and is also available in the public library. So, the opportunity for a member of the audience to pursue the agenda in great detail, including the consent agenda, is there. So, there's no effort here of not being transparent. There's no effort of trying to hide anything. It simply is an action that takes things, it makes them a little bit tighter than the way that perhaps they could go. I would point out that I served two terms earlier, and in six years, being on this Commission, there was never an instance where a member of the public ever asked to comment on a consent agenda. Never, in six years. So, that's how unusual it is. So, all we're really doing here is cleaning up something that makes it a little bit easier for everybody to understand. If somebody really wants to comment, nobody's going to stop you from talking. We really want to hear you. We're here to listen to the people. We'll figure out a way to make it happen. Even if the consent agenda has passed, any member of this Commission can look at you and say, "I would like you to speak on this item," and you will speak on that item. So, it's all there, and that's why I'm voting in favor of this, because really, it's just cleaning up something. It's not a big issue. Mike? I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that.
Thank you, fellow guys. I just want to say, to go along with what Commissioner Stonehouse said, I just want to say, you know, the Commission policy specifically states, "Public comment may not exceed three minutes per person. A person may reserve time to speak on unfinished business or new business agenda items. This may result in the item being moved up on the agenda at the mayor's discretion." The idea that we're basically adhering to our own policy, of which we've been criticized for not doing in the past, that's exactly really what's going on. I don't understand the thought of we're not being, we're being less transparent. Commissioner Stonehouse is absolutely correct. The agenda's put on the website on Friday. People have all weekend long to work with it. We work on it all weekend long, and pretty much everybody that I know of does. And we can talk to each other from time to time as well. But one thing that the members of the public have proven to me in these meetings is that they have no problem talking about what they want to talk about at public comment all the time. They do a great job of that. We just had a work session where we had several people come up and speak about different items. And most of that was specific about the work session, but even a few other items that had nothing to do with the work session. People know what they want to talk about. People also do a great job of contacting us as commissioners. They stop us on the street. They email us. They phone us. They know how to get in touch with us and express their opinions. Many of those people refuse to speak at public comment. I understand that. Public comment is public speaking, and it's difficult for a lot of people. All this really is, is streamlining and making us really get to a point where we're following our own policy, which I personally support. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Commissioner Stonehouse, Plard, had basically said everything that I could say about it. The reason I wanted to change this rule of procedure was not to change it, but to clarify it. Because when you're running a meeting, you want it to be orderly, you want it to be meaningful, you want it to be efficient. Now, if you, I don't want to get bogged down, I mean, I'm not trying to race through this, but we got to be moving along. You can't get hung up on things. When you come to the consent agenda, as they said, it tends to be routine items. They're non-controversial in nature, for the most part, and they're usually just procedural. So, there's no reason to, it's commonly accepted, under Robert's Rules of Order, that they be grouped together and they be passed without discussion. We are being 100% transparent. There is no hiding of anything. We're not trying to sneak something through. We have two public comments in which people can address this. What they really want, if you want to get away from that, is if they just, they want more than six minutes, they want nine minutes? Well, you know, we just can't do that. And if you can't figure out in six minutes in a nice meeting, if you can't get it said then, you know, I don't know when you can. And as far as, if it is something that a commissioner wants pulled, it was brought forth, that you can pull it out very easily. If someone from sitting in this, you know, in front of us wants it pulled, just ask a commissioner, we'll pull it. So, there is no reason it can't be discussed. We're just trying to make these meetings more efficient. That's why I'm doing it. Commissioner Smith?
I get where you're coming from. I do think that we could have the perception that the consent agenda is run-of-the-mill type stuff, and someone else may have a different perception, and that's why I think it's important to be able to give an additional three minutes, or whatever that may be, because that could be a big issue to them. I understand. Usually, our perception is run-of-the-mill. But just because it's our perception doesn't mean it's the perception of everyone else.
To that, I would say they have six minutes to talk about it. Commissioner Reynolds?
Not going to continue to argue very further on this, because I don't think that my no vote's going to go much further. But just to make a quick correction to what these two commissioners were mentioning, I wasn't saying like a lack of transparency on our part as commissioners. I do think that we have that ability, and we're good at that. But it's the look of transparency throughout the community that there's constantly people thinking people, not necessarily us, just government as a whole, not being transparent at all points in time. So, any way that it could be misconstrued that we're not being like that is not something I'm okay with. And the other only point that I wanted to make is to Commissioner Stonehouse. I know that every single one of us, if a resident came up to us asking for something to be pulled, we would. But not all residents understand that that's something that can be done. I guarantee probably one out of 10 at max. So, that's just my further comments, and that's all I got.
Further comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of this, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
That passes five-two. Next new business item, the Fifth Street Reconstruction and Homestead Street Upgrade Projects. City Clerk, please?
Thank you, sir. Background. Plans have been developed for the package reconstruction project of Fifth Street and Homestead Street. In accordance with the prior Planning Commission and City Commission approval, master plan and capital improvement plan requirements. The work will consist of minor water main and service work, sanitary sewer main replacement extension, replacement of sanitary sewer laterals, storm sewer main replacement extension, sidewalk replacement extension, reconstruction of the street structure, and the associated pertinences per the plan limits. The plan limits are as follows. Fifth Street from Spring Street to Fisher, and Homestead Street from Grove to Ward Street. Bids for the project were opened on May 18th, 2017. Three contractors responded to our request for bids. The results are summarized below. Engineers estimate $964,879. Smith Construction, $1,037,318.50. Hebert Construction, $1,067,354.20. Overstar Inc., $1,189,561.50. Tabulation and checking of the bids found errors on one of the contractor's bids. Errors were mathematical and had no bearing on the final outcome. Fiscal effect, the Fifth Street Reconstruction and Homestead Street Upgrade Projects were approved under the fiscal year 2018 budget. These projects will be part of the fiscal year 2018 bond package. Recommendation, award a contract for the package reconstruction project of Fifth Street and Homestead Street to Smith Construction Inc. in the amount of $1,037,318.50, based on the quantities and unit prices bid. Allow the city manager to use a 10% contingency for any unknown circumstances. Alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Who would like to make a motion? Commissioner Schlegel?
I would make the motion to approve the Fifth Street Reconstruction and Homestead Street Upgrade Projects as presented by staff.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
You have any comments? Commissioner Schlegel?
None.
Frazier?
Glad I went to local contractor.
Any other comments?
Did I hear it right? You put the contingency in there, right, for the city manager? Okay.
As presented.
Okay.
It's as presented by staff, so that would include it. You're okay with that? Can do.
City Clerk, we're good on that?
Yes.
Okay. Seeing no further comment, we're going to vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes. Yes.
Opposed. Carry seven-zero. Our last new business item of the evening is extended park hours for dark sky viewing. City Clerk, some more background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Background. All hours in city parks are currently 7:00 a.m. until 11:00 p.m. The Marquette Astronomical Society has requested the City Commission consider approving a trial period for a dark sky park at Prescott Isle Park. The trial period would involve extending the park hours for the southwest portion of Prescott Isle Park to 1:00 a.m. on every Friday and Saturday night, June 1, 2018, through October 31, 2018. On these nights, the two gates for the drive around the island, one at the gazebo and one at the pavilion, would be locked at 11:00 p.m., and the area beyond the gates closed. The public would be allowed to drive to the pavilion and view the night sky from that area. Staff has worked with the Marquette Astronomical Society to reach this compromise. The Marquette Astronomical Society has presented this trial period proposal, excuse me, I'm going to try throat, to the Prescott Isle Park recommendation. Prescott Isle Park Advisory Committee and Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, who both unanimously recommended the proposal for commission consideration. The Marquette Police Department has agreed to monitor the park during the trial period, and have Park Patrol lock the main gates at 1:00 a.m. Fiscal effects, no city funds will be incurred with the approval of this item. Recommendation, approve the proposal for allowing public limited access to the southwest area of Prescott Isle Park until 1:00 a.m., Fridays and Saturdays, June 1, 2018, through October 31, 2018, for the purpose of night sky viewing, and authorize the city manager to extend the park hours to that area for the duration of the period. Alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Plard?
Your Honor, I move that we approve the proposal for allowing public limited access to the southwest area of Prescott Isle Park until 1:00 a.m., Fridays and Saturdays, June 1, 2018, through October 31, 2018, for the purpose of night sky viewing, and authorize the city manager to extend the park hours to that area for the duration of the period.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things. Number one, I like the project. I've liked it since the beginning. I agree. There's spectacular views of the skies. I want to thank Andrew MacGyver for the work you've done with this. He did a great job. I would call on the Marquette Astronomical Society now to rescind the article that they wrote to the Mining Journal. Write a letter to the Mining Journal and rescind the article that they wrote. If you recall, and you read the Mining Journal, they wrote an article that was completely wrong. And they hadn't talked to the city yet, and the Mining Journal published it. And I asked them to write a letter saying that they hadn't talked to the city. And this has been worked out very, very well with the city, especially the police department did a great job with it. And I don't think anybody intended to have this to be any different than what we're doing right now. According to Mr. MacGyver's presentation, this is a progression that I think, I know for myself personally, anyway, would like to see continued and developed further for the city. I think it's a great idea, and I love it. But, Marquette Astronomical Society, please write a letter to the Mining Journal telling them that your article fell short. Thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds, anything?
No, nothing.
Commissioner Frazier?
Just one quick comment. I think it's a great idea. It's a great viewing area. The only thing is, somebody mentioned at our other work session that just because people are there doesn't mean nobody's going to get hurt or anything's going to get damaged. That's not true. As you know, remember during our last storm, there was tons of people out at the island, and two people got washed out in the lake because they were trying to dodge waves. There were tons of people out there watching, and people, I actually took video of the people getting washed out of the lake. So, just because there are people there doesn't mean it's perfectly safe. We know that. And I think it'd be a great situation for everybody to enjoy the lights. Just remember, it can be a dangerous park.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed. That carries seven-zero. That carries seven-zero. Next, we move to the last public comment of the evening. Again, it's time for residents to address the commission. I'm going to open public comment at the front podium. You've got three minutes, we need to name an address. Anyone wish to address the commission at this time?
Thanks, Jeff Erle, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. May 14th, Mr. Plord accused me of cherry picking the chair's response to the fluoride concerns. I'd accused Mr. Plord of disregarding the full context of my comments except for portions he could finagle acute responses around. He later went on to speak without thinking through his analogy. Yes, some of the chair's retort made better sense, but his remarks as quoted May 14th were so strange, they stood out on their own. That's different than Mr. Plord's habit of responding without taking all the provided information into account, as documented several times on record. Feel free to cherry pick me if any sentence of mine is so utterly goofy. His analogy of me accusing Trump for what Nixon did is also flawed. I don't cite current members by name for past blunders. I mention the past because history keeps repeating itself, as seen May 14th on parcel two. Why in light of past lies should we believe this board will handle parcel two with any greater sensitivity, as Mr. Stonehouse assured? The architect had just told us he plans to utilize the three-story height limit, so we know this current board will block the rest of our view with yet more private buildings, like that seven-story atrocity going up. There's hardly any retail, and now you've privatized the last parcel which lies along the highway, the perfect location for convenient retail access. We are rightfully upset over the whole ball of wax. Mr. Schlegel seems decent, but must realize our history didn't begin the day he arrived. I can't repeat 1,000 pages of background information each time a new member appears, nor is there time to identify which members are exempt from which criticism. He asked me to speak more positively, unaware of the man who for six years spoke so highly of this board and our city. The members ignored him equally. They used people's kindness to buy themselves time to keep doing what they're doing, uncontested, hence the Lake Shore Site and South Rail Yard. What is my purpose up here, they ask? To keep these recurring issues from happening. This current board has enough to answer for without feeling blamed for past commissions. Founder's Landing was intended to be a community visioning effort, but turned into the fulfillment of one man's dream, which explains why it's predominantly housing units of maximum height, and why the placement of the buildings was unimportant, so to maximize profits for one party to the detriment of everyone else. This is what happens when board members can't read site plans, or consider adjacent land uses, or visualize how something will look before it's built, or disseminate public input, or decide by other than who's who, right up to May 14th, when this current board bought right into it. Our father Marquette statue looks out over nothing, except downtown is nice, but he looks out over nothing except what you get when you flounder around, again, giving the public less than what was originally presented.
Anyone else? Anyone else wish to address us? See none, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move to comments from the commission. We will start with Commissioner Reynolds.
I knew that was going to happen. Started a weird way last week, I'm like, it's going to be me. The only comments I have this evening is, as the mayor mentioned, we had a recycling session before this, and I think all of us as city commissioners are looking for the public to come forward to us to talk about what they are interested in as far as the recycling options. I'd like the discussion to continue, I know it's starting to get a little more difficult to come up with a final proposal of what we should do, but I'd like that conversation to continue. The only thing that I wanted to chat about is, we had a couple people this evening to come in and talk about the NTN trails, and I know that I've seen a lot of information on the social media in the past little bit, and I was actually added to a group today of over 400 people on Facebook chat, which has, I've had to mute it for the moment, because it just keeps going off, of people that are concerned about that, those trails and the property that were, that are up for sale. So with that, I'm asking the city manager to talk about what the actual process is, and what we're at step one of that, and where it goes during his comments.
You're taking away the only thing I had to comment about at the end of the meeting. So I'm going to have to, um, yes, I'm very aware of the situation. For those that don't know, parcel 35 is the parcel that sits between Mr. Kern's campground and the current trailhead for NTN. There are three or four trails that do go through there. I met, Dennis Stackowitz and I met with the chair of the NTN and the director last week, talked about this situation, and we agreed to work together to hopefully come to an applicable or an acceptable solution on both parties. Just to point out that the, to the people who commented on the public planning process, there was a public planning process that was approved by the commission in February of 2010, the ad hoc report, rather lengthy, if I recall correctly, about a year-long study of that property. The properties that were put up for sale were all identified as developable, including parcel 35. When I took over as city manager, I made it very clear to the NTN that one of my goals was to develop some of this property that was red at that time, and they may have, they may have already had trails there, but I did warn them that it could be detrimental if they were to continue to build trails on red parcels, of which there's about 110 or 20 acres out of the 2,500 that's, that's in the Hartwood. So it's kind of a long answer, but the, the end result is that I suggested to the NTN that maybe they might want to buy it, even though they don't necessarily fit the RFQ process. I would certainly entertain an email or a letter with that in mind, and excuse them from the RFQ process, but consider them in the sale process. If that failed to work, I think whatever parcel we're dealing with out there, that there would have to be, at least in my estimation, some consideration for the NTN trails. In other words, I would prefer that a developer with, with the commission's approval approve that a developer either adapts to the trails that are in existence or relocates the trails if they were to buy a piece of property that had a trail on it. In other words, coexists with the trails. I believe Mr. Kern has done that to some extent already with his campground, so that would be my goal. And when we were done with the meeting, I think both the chair and the director were pleased with the conversation. So I guess to end my comments, we hope to work it out, and I have no intention of, of making life difficult for the NTN.
Thank you. Commissioner Plord?
Just to, I agree with how important that trails are to people in the area, and I can, I'd like to say just for my part, I support the trails as well. I'm also a supporter of increasing the city tax base, but not at the price of any trails. I also want to mention, too, that it's a long process. Anybody, anywhere in the area that wants to have a say on what's going on can have that say. I'm sure we'll have work sessions, we'll have public hearings, and several things before anything is done with parcel 35. But we've held the Hartwood Forest Area for a long time, and it's getting time to take a look at it and see what, what can be done to the advantage of the city and the advantage of the people that live all around the area. And that includes to preserve the trails, so, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Stonehouse?
Yeah, just a couple of quick hits. It was on the commission when that Hartwood study was done in 2010, and I remember it being very lengthy, very complicated, very involved with tremendous amount of public input from a variety of sources. So it's, it is done, and I think it was done extremely well, and it really became, in many ways, the ultimate compromise between the different groups, because all the groups involved, everybody wanted something different than the other group, and it took them some time to storm and form and work out something that was amenable to all, and I think it's a good product. Certainly, we want to take special care of those, of those trails. I would commend the Mining Journal for the great article that they did on waterfront safety, just, it came out a few days ago, and I think that was a real service to the community. Again, it's an eye-opener for people to realize how beautiful Lake Superior can be and how dangerous it can be, and we all need to be on our guard for it. So, again, I commend the paper for doing that. I would let people know, too, that on Sunday 10 June is the annual Kiwanis Chicken Barbecue. And please, get your tickets, be there, support a good community foundation that does tremendous work. They deserve our support. And lastly, just kind of circle back to the work session we had on Glass. Fascinating work session. I wish everybody that showed up here would equally take the effort to go out and show up at the county landfill meetings, because those are the people that make the decisions that everybody's mad about. The city of Marquette essentially gathers its, its material, whether it be trash or recyclable product or whatever, delivers them to the landfill, and we all expect the landfill to treat them correctly, to do the right thing with whatever, whatever that product is. And if you have issues and concerns with how that's being handled, it's the landfill that is our executive agent to do the right thing with those products. So I would certainly talk to them, let them know your concerns directly, because, again, city of Marquette doesn't do the landfill, that is the responsibility of the Marquette Solid Waste Management Authority. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, on Wednesday, we had a marathon strategic planning session, and we'll get an update on that right before the next meeting, the next city commission meeting, I think it's 4:30. And I'm really looking forward to hearing what, what's going to be proposed about affordable or mid-range, mid-range housing in the city of Marquette, or how we can work on that for those properties that are being proposed for development. I think we do need to work with the trail network as much as we can, but we also need to find some affordable housing options and some tax base moving forward for the city. And then also, the glass recycling work session that we just had was pretty interesting. We've got some options. Again, there's a meeting tomorrow night with the Marquette County Solid Waste Authority that some of us will be in attendance at, and I've got some hard-hitting questions for them, really looking forward to that, and I will come back with an update.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
Lots of fun, again. Glass recycling was a good work session, a lot of input, and, you know, I know what they're saying, one option was a buck a household, which is not much, but then when you think about, they're like, oh, keep glass at landfill, it'd be good for the environment, that's good, but if you're careful about the, don't forget that, if you're paying a trucker to go to Milwaukee, you're talking about at least 200 gallons of fuel back there, at least to get down there, and at least 200 gallons if we get back, so don't think, think about that. Yes, you're saving glass to get put in landfill, but you're burning more oil, so just think about the consequences with both things, and like, people said, you know, the county is another person, board you can go to, you could talk to the county landfill board, there was a, talk to the county board. There are a person you can comment to, because the city is basically just a client, we're just a customer of the landfill. It's all we are. We don't tell them to do anything, we're just a customer, basically is all we are. And, you know, with all these properties, with the bike trails and Founder's Landing, all that area, this is all just development phase. This is nothing that's concrete, nothing's being said, but we've all heard your comments, we all understand, and we all know that. Lakeview property is a prime real estate, even though some people comment, you know, people have to say, hey, I live in this part of town, I got great views, if this building is built, my view will be blocked. We don't know, we've all heard that, we've all, I've heard that from many people, even that live in Gwin have said that. I come into town, I can't see the lake. Well, yes, you can't see the lake from that point, but there's plenty of places you can see the lake, you drive through Founder's Landing, you can see the lake, you could drive out to the island, there's plenty of places you can see. I know you can't see the lake, you can't see the lake, you can see the lake from Founder's Landing if you look out where the, your rowing club is, there's plenty to see the lake. We've got tons of lakefront property, even on South Beach, and there's people that comment that, that maybe, there's people that comment, though, that have a great view of the lake, they don't say they have a great view of the lake. In fact, there's one person that comments a lot that has a great view of the lake and nothing obstructs his view, as it would be the size of New York Imperial State Building, that's the only thing that would block his view. Other than that, I know wouldn't, my view wouldn't be hurt, but I'm, I understand everybody's view, and I'm all aboard. You know, if this property gets to development in Founder's Landing, we will look into the situation, say, hey, you know, keep it under wraps and just make sure you don't hurt everybody's view. They'll understand that, and the architect knows that, and Mike Angelia is in the process of just working with them to sell the land, and he's made a point to them, they understand that, so I think they're good people to work with.
Mr. Schlegel?
To beat a dead horse, recycling, recycling, recycling. It's all about education from this point on as well, other avenues, what we can do aside of Glass. I was really excited about some of the offers that were given to us this evening at the work session, to maybe, I don't know, utilize their talents and expand on what best practices are currently. I'm going to pursue some of those as well. The other very important thing is, it is almost June, which means schools are letting out pretty soon. We've got a lot of crosswalks in town that do and do not have signage on them, so that, I guess my ploy is here, or my push is to have everybody lead by example, slow down, watch for people that are crossing. Kids are out and about pretty quick here, it's going to get pretty nuts in town, and just take it easy. Nothing's too, you don't have to get anywhere that's going to get you in trouble by, you know, having a, having a run in with somebody. So, anyway, that's all I've got. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Slide that dead horse over here, because I'm, but recycling is just a very difficult issue, and of course, it's because glass has zero value. We all want to recycle it, but we're doing the best we can to, to figure out what and best way to handle this. In defense of waste management, the only thing that I'll say a good thing about them, don't blame them for any of this, all they do is haul it. It's not their decision to, you know, pick and choose, they just haul it. The other thing that's kind of disturbing to me about recycling is, I think 20% of the people, or it seems like 20% of the city makeup is doing recycling, the rest aren't. That number has got to get better, because it's just a small part of the city. So in order to, you know, really get into recycling and do it right, you've got to have more people participating. That's all I have. City Manager?
I'm done.
Wait, I'm done. We are adjourned.